Something Hinkley.
Oh, so hard.
We're on.
Live.
Good morning. We will call our meeting to order.
My pleasure.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And our prayer for the morning. Heavenly Father, we beseech your divine guidance in this meeting. Keep us ever mindful of our obligations. Grant us, dear Lord, wisdom, tolerance, and courage that we may well serve our county and fulfill our trust. Amen. Steve, could I have a motion to approve?
Move to approve the minutes of February 2nd.
Second?
Got a motion to second. Any changes? Discussion? Roll call, please.
Hambley?
Yes.
Swedick?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes. So our first item on the agenda this morning is Andy Conrad, our county engineer, and live today, we have Andy Conrad.
Thank you, sir.
You want me to handle it? All right.
That doesn't matter.
Nope. All right. Thank you, Andy.
Thank you.
Good morning, all. I have just one resolution this morning, and that is for the accepting and awarding for the 2021 replacement of bridge number 20 on Seville Road in Westfield Township.
Moved here for the resolution.
Second?
Got a motion in a second. Any questions for Andy? Roll call?
Hambley?
Yes.
Swedick? Hudson?
And we included in the package is also the weekly permit list. But the item that I wanted to, I just handed out to you is my annual report. The Ohio code asked me to submit this to you annually, so this is the, kind of the accounting of what we did with the, as far as projects, expenditures, revenue for the year 2020. Just kind of a highlight, we resurfaced over 40 miles of road this year in 2020, which is a pretty good year. We have 323 miles of roads, so resurfacing-
That's giving me my question, yeah.
Resurfacing 40 a year. That gets us, well, we can keep our head above water. We did replace, let's see, four bridges, rehabbed a few. We have 290 bridges on the inventory. So five or six is just keeping our head above water. So we did those. A couple of other things to note is we secured almost $3 million in grants towards road and bridge projects last year. So we'll try to keep that up as well. That helps. We did see an increase in the gas tax revenue. If you recall, there was the increase up to, what is it? Thirty, I think it was 37 and a half cents per gallon. Thirty-eight and a half. Thirty-eight and a half, and the projection was about 1.4 million per county increase with the COVID-19 hitting, the decreased traffic. We didn't see that. We saw under a million. So the rest I can let you read, and if you guys have any questions, feel free to reach out to me.
Andy, do you, we just got a pavement condition report from Noacka.
Yes.
Is that something that you guys either have your own or that you use that report for planning road repairs around the county?
We, I got a copy as well, and that information is a snapshot in time. As soon as they take that information, it's already outdated. There's a number of projects in there. They said you should be looking to plan on it. We already paved those roads last year. So it's, I guess it's nice backup information, but it's not real beneficial because we're looking real time. Things degrade at different rates. They look at it and they kind of make projections. So we have a long-range plan of like five years, but we're looking at, we already have our 2021 roads. We're out to bid now, and we're already looking at 2022 roads. So we're, we use that, we don't use their information, but we use very similar information to kind of keep our five-year plan rolling.
So you have your own, in effect, pavement condition report that you rate above?
They have, that's generated based on ODOT coming out and doing an inspection. And like I said, as soon as that information is captured, it's already outdated because it's, they set that in stone and then they project information. They don't, they don't keep up with the information. So it may be four-year-old information. It just doesn't work for us.
Right. So do you know what roads you're gonna, what major roads, it's just significant ones you're gonna do this year?
This year, we do have Noacka funding for a project down various roads in around Wadsworth Town, City. We're partnering with the city with Leatherman, Hartman, and Reimer Roads. So that'd be a big one. We're gonna do portions of Fenn, Abbeville, and Marsh, some of that hot mix there. Then we have like eight miles of cold mix paving and probably another 25 or 30 of Chipseal.
Medina County, or County, Medina Line Road. Has that been done both east or north and south?
It is smooth all the way, finally.
Because I've been north on it, but I haven't been all the way down.
From Eastern Road, City of Norton did from Eastern up a couple of miles, and then we picked up from theirs up to the Summit County sections, and Summit County had done theirs in about two years ago. So it's, I think all the residents are fairly happy out there now, other than people are speeding. We get that complaint a lot when you take a road that's been a little rugged for a little while and you resurface it. Now the residents say, well, people speed down here now. So we do get calls and complaints about that.
Going back to the pavement condition report, the management system, isn't a lot of that for regional purposes, just to kind of compare how Medina County is doing with Lake County and Lorraine and Chogga, as well as Cuyahoga County? And then when you start talking about the regional dollars and distributing it that way based upon, if you will, those reports. Isn't that pretty much?
Yeah, it is a tool for the, seeing what the regional needs are and the dispersment of funds. But when we get down, there's only a finite number of road miles in Medina County that are eligible for the federal funding. So we have 323 miles of road, but if you look at that report, county-maintained roads, there's actually significantly less miles. So we're looking at on-system and off-the-national highway system. So it's only a portion of what we're looking at.
Actually maintaining, right?
Yeah. Okay, if you look through, if you have any questions, well, means let me know.
This is to you.
Yeah.
Thanks, thanks, Andy. Stop back and see us again next year. Okay, next up, we have Amy Lyon Galvin, our Assistant County Administrator.
Good morning.
Good morning, Amy.
I have seven resolutions for your consideration this morning. The first one is amending the appropriation measure resolution. The second is cash transfers for various funds. The third is authorizing the county auditor to transfer funds from various county department accounts to the Medina County Print Shop revenue line item. The fourth is authorizing the county auditor to transfer funds from various county department accounts to the gasoline rotary fund. The fifth is extending the expiration date for dog registrations and waiving the dog license penalty fees. This is what I had discussed with you all last week, extending that deadline through July 1st of 2021. The sixth resolution is authorizing expenditures related to juvenile detention center-sponsored meetings and events. They too are hopeful they'll have some in-person meetings as we continue into 2021. And then the seventh resolution are the claims for the week in the amount of $972,637.17.
Moved to approve the seven resolutions.
Second?
Got a motion in a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Hambley?
Yes.
Swedick?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And next, we have Holly Muren, our Human Resources Director. Drum roll, please. Coming to the door.
Shuffling around in there. On our personal resolution today, we have four rate increases. One at Job and Family Services, two at County Home, and one in Commissioners, one leave of absence in transit, three returned from leaves, two in transit, and one at County Home.
Moved here for the resolution.
Second?
Got a motion in a second. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Yes.
Swedick? Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Holly. And next, we have Scott Miller, our County Administrator.
Good morning.
Good morning, Scott.
Just have one resolution for you today. This is the resolution authorizing the purchase of watchtower body cameras in any car camera systems for Medina County Sheriff's Office. This is what we discussed last week. We're getting both systems for $300,116, and this will replace the current body cams and dashboard cams, which are currently breaking down and becoming obsolete. I do know that there has been some discussion. The governor has authorized approximately $10 million in grant funds for body cams, and in doing some further investigation, that's going to be given, or preferences being given to those departments that currently do not have body cams. There will be some funding available for departments whose cameras are becoming obsolete, such as ours. The concern that I have is that we currently have a price that's under state purchasing, and my fear is that the price will go up once the money is released, and then if we're not funded, we'll pay more than $300,000. So I would like to move forward, go ahead and move forward with this purchase.
And Scott, our current cameras are like 20 years old, if I recall. They're dated.
Yeah, definitely dated. Yeah.
Moved to approve the resolution.
Second?
Any further questions? Roll call, please.
Hambley?
Yes.
Swedick?
Yes.
Hudson?
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Jeremy Cinco, our Sanitary Engineer.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning, Jeremy.
Today, I got three resolutions for consideration today. The first is awarding the bid for the Medina Road Pump Station Relocation Project. That one's along State Route 18. The second is declaring the necessity of constructing a section of sanitary sewer on Ryan Road from the southwestern property line of 55, 56 wagon trail to the northern property line of 5974 Ryan Road in Lafayette Township. That's part of that Suss Sewer Project. And the final resolution is authorizing the Sanitary Engineer Department to purchase a single-axle cab and chassis and dump truck body through state purchasing, as we discussed last week.
Moved to approve the three resolutions.
Second?
Got a motion in a second. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Hambley?
Yes.
Swedick?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, everyone.
Jeremy, can I ask you one question?
Sure.
Has the contract been awarded for the 8370 Lake Road project?
We did last week to site builders.
And so they've been contacted and things are rolling along?
Yep, we're working on that. Yep.
Perfect. Got it. Thank you.
No problem.
So next, the Commissioners have one resolution. It is a resolution approving the petition for the regular annexation of 1.7311 acres of land, known as being part of Brunswick Hills Township, to the city of Brunswick, Medina County, Ohio.
I would move to approve the resolution as well as approve the hearing minutes from a regular annexation hearing that was in our packet, other than the suggested change of the Commissioner.
I think it was already changed for the signed copy.
Yeah, it was, but I guess, but since we're approving-
Right, right. I will second. And this is regarding the public hearing we had last week.
Right, yes.
Roll call, please.
Hambley?
Yes.
Swedick?
Yes. And next, we'll go into our department updates. First one is Laura Toth from the Office for Older Adults.
Hello. Good morning.
Good morning, Laura.
Always coming off a really good month, and I'm happy to report that, first of all, our great grocery giveaway that we participated in was a success, and you can read about it in the Commissioners' newsletter. Was a great article there. We were able to distribute over 360 boxes of shelf-stable food and supplies worth over $60 a box. I had one senior call me, and she was thrilled. She's like, this is like getting Christmas all over again, because there were food, there were supplies, things like that. So that was excellent. I have a chart to review.
Although I would say you could have had better weather.
Could have had, but it wasn't, there wasn't any precipitation, which is good. This is a set, if you could just pass it down.
That's a set.
There's only two papers, but. I started doing this report in 2019 at the request of Commissioner Hudson to talk about unduplicated clients. So this is a chart, I put 2019 and 2020s in there of unduplicated clients per program. So unduplicated transit clients, home-delivered meal clients, and congregant meal clients. Those are the three columns that you'll see. And looking at 2019 to 2020, we had a 70% increase in home-delivered meal clients. Not really a surprise, given the number of meals we delivered, and our numbers as far as clients in, served in transportation or congregant, were down a bit. But it's really interesting to look at where the growth took place. We had significant growth in Medina, in Montville Townships, Sharon Township, and the city of Wadsworth. The city of Wadsworth tripled their unduplicated home-delivered meal clients, going from 31 in 2019 to 106 in 2020. So that's a really big need that we were able to get there in the city of Wadsworth. And in the city of Medina, we almost doubled. We had 72 in 2019 in home-delivered meal clients and 134 in 2020. So it's just a really good to see where those clients are getting served. We still lack service provision where I know it's needed, especially in the southwest part of the county. I know that there are people out there that need our services, and we continue to work on outreach efforts to let them know that we are here and that we can help. Any questions on that?
Laura, I'm surprised that you had as many congregant meal clients in 2020.
Yeah, that's so-
So was that like the first couple of months?
Yes, so that was in January, February, just the first two weeks of March before everything closed down. Again, Wadsworth, the Restaurant Voucher Program really bulks up that number. We had 57 people even in 2020 participate in that program in the first two, basically the first 10 weeks it was up and running.
Yeah, good, good. Is that something that's exclusive to Wadsworth, or is the voucher program available in?
It is. Well, it's not exclusive in the city limits, but it is exclusive in the southeast part of the county. So that includes Wadsworth Township, Sharon, Guilford, and then Montville south of 71. So 71 kind of crosses at a diagonal in Montville, so anything south of that. Those are the geographic regions that can participate in the voucher program. And that is by design of Western Reserve Area Agency on Aging, because that's paid for with grant funds. An update on taxes, not necessarily a positive update, but AARP is holding off on tax appointments until March. We are, we've not received a schedule yet, but we're taking names for a waiting list, and we'll call those once we receive the schedule. That list is currently over 500 names, so it's a very large. It's been a challenge. People are frustrated because now they have all their information. They need to complete taxes, and we do not have that service available anywhere in the county. So we're really at the mercy of AARP and their volunteers. We do have resources of senior discounted tax preparers in the county. If anybody's interested in that information, they can contact us. Our Advisory Council on Aging and Disability continues to meet monthly and discuss senior issues and strategize ways to provide more services to those in need. We're currently looking for representatives for the city of Brunswick. We currently have none. That's not happened. But we had somebody pass away and somebody limited out, so, or not limited out, but chose not to reapply. If anyone is interested in filling those spots, please contact our office. And of course, Ray Schulte was our Vice Chair of our Advisory Council on Aging, so he will definitely be missed. We're happy to announce a new partnership with the Medina County District Library. We've received grant money, and we're supplementing that with our health, or with our Human Services levy money to create a tech training program. Any older adult who's interested in learning how to operate a computer, participate in a Zoom meeting, or create an email account is encouraged to call our office. We have Chromebooks that we purchased to help seniors learn, and classes start at the library the last week of February. They're doing classes with one person, one library person in the room, and two people, like in a conference room, where they can look over their shoulders and help guide them to setting up some of these services. So hopefully, we'll get people that are interested in that. We're also using our levying dollars to start a new service, a provision of community meals. So starting March 10th, we will prepare meals for up to 30 recipients to give away for a drive-through lunch. So it's good to get our kitchen up and going in that manner. Anybody interested in receive a meal, and receiving a meal can contact our office, and we will repeat that provision every three weeks. We're gonna provide a lunch for people to drive through and pick up until we can get our kitchen up and going with consumers inside the building. Finally, I just wanted to emphasize the importance, and you guys know how important the home-delivered meal is, not only for nutrition, but as a gatekeeper program. I drove a meal route on January 22nd, and there was a woman. I walked into her house, and she was on the floor. And she said, "I fell at 10:30, and I knew you'd be here," and it was 12:30. So it just goes to show you how important it is and what kind of things that we're doing in the community. Our drivers are really the gatekeepers and are keeping an eye on people. So we had the Hinkley rescue came out and helped her up, and everything was okay that day. But I just thought it was just a nice kind of story to tell. Thank you, guys, so much.
A couple of questions.
Sure.
So you're looking for a couple of advisory board members?
Yes.
What sort of qualifications are you looking for?
Okay, the person just has to have an interest in senior issues. They do not have to be necessarily of age to be a senior, but residency within Medina County in certain areas. For example, Mr. Schulte's spot would be a township, anywhere, any township within the county. And actually, our Chair, Ron Bischoff, is helping me work on that position. And then we have city representatives, like I said, Brunswick, and then five at-large positions. But I think people can just call and ask, you know, talk to me personally. I usually bring people in for a tour of the agency, talk about our mission and our strategic plan and things of that nature.
Another question.
Sure.
So the vaccine is coming out.
Oh, yeah.
Eighty-five, eighty, seventy-five, I think we're now down to-
It's sixty-five.
Yeah, seventy, sixty-five. So once they get the second dose, is the Office for Older Adults gonna start having activities where they can come in and?
That is such a fantastic question. We are still under the state order to get tested every two weeks. So I have been working on getting that testing, and we have a couple of options. I don't see, I wish I knew, I could see the projection of when the governor or the health director might lift that order. I don't know, but I'm still working on testing, and I feel like I've said that every month. But we have made some progress because Western Reserve Area Agency on Aging and the Department of Social Services in Cleveland have taken on trying to get testing for those agencies that opted in. So there's about 30 or 40 that said, yeah, let's see your testing program. I'd be very interested in it. So we just had progress to get that pilot program going. So I am hopeful in the next, in the next month or so, I will at least have word on it. The other thing is I was contacted by a facility within Medina County who said we might be able to test your staff. So I would jump right on it. So I'm working on a couple of things. The first, the first one that opens up, we'll take. But I don't, I would rather get that going and open up than just wait for people to get vaccinated because I don't know when that order from the state will get lifted.
To be clear, it's testing of the staff?
Yes.
And they're talking about the PCR testing, not the rapid test. Is that correct?
They're talking about not the antibody test. They're talking about, yeah, I think either one of the, I think rapid testing might work. I'm not sure.
Okay, that's what-
I'm not sure, but I know it's not any test for the antibodies. It's test for positivity of the virus.
Okay, got it.
And not only is it staff and volunteers, which right now we're not utilizing, it's also then when consumers come into the facility, anybody who would exhibit symptoms or be vulnerable, we'd have to send them for testing as well.
Yeah, that's a lot of responsibility, probably better to hold off, to open.
Right, right. Well, I think the second doses, even for the first wave, are gonna be toward the end of the month or early March, so.
Yeah, one of my drivers is-
It will take time for the, a critical mass to develop that are fully vaccinated.
Yeah. I will definitely, though, keep you guys updated on the progress of if we're gonna test or if we shouldn't.
Well, if you do, particularly if you're going to start opening on a limited basis, because that's something we can put in the newsletter and get out to the public that-
Yeah, and that's the thing, even when we do open, it's kind of a slow rollout. We'll have this group come in and then air out the play, then that group come in and air the play. So when I said community meals, those might be ongoing for quite a while because I don't anticipate us serving food even when we do open. We will eventually, but not when we first open.
Right.
Excellent.
Very good.
Thank you, Laura. Great report.
Thank you so much. Thanks.
And next up is Phil Teterington from the Alcohol Drug Addiction and Mental Health Board.
You're alive. We haven't seen you in so long.
I am, thank you. I gotta follow Laura, huh?
Good morning, sir.
Good morning, good morning. First of all, thank you for allowing me to present and tell you a little bit about some of the good things that the Adam Board's doing. I do have, I wanna follow my script here to keep it minimal. I had to cut a lot of stuff out. We're doing a lot of things, but over time. But before I continue, I do wanna thank the Commissioners for the CARES Act funding that you provided to the Adam Board for PPE. Working with Amy was, you know, it was great. She was wonderful and very professional, so we thank you for that. Thank you, Amy. So today, I wanna highlight some of the good things that we're doing and some of the things that we're able to do because of the levy funding. So I broke it down into three categories. So the first category is community outreach. Second one's gonna be mental health crisis and crisis services, excuse me, and then the third one will be recovery support. So I'll tell you a little bit about in each of those and give you some highlights. So for community outreach, our goal is really to help further the Adam Board's mission and to inform the community about the growing number of programs, services, and supports, and really how to access them. So for many years, very few people really knew what the Adam Board did, what our missions are, and, you know, the resources and things that were out there. So currently, we do have a, to meet this goal, we have a Community Relations Director. Currently, she's training. And very soon, she'll be promoting the levy, its benefits through the lens of not only the Adam Board, Job and Family Services, as well as Office for Older Adults on their Facebook page. So really to, you know, get out what the good things and the benefits of that levy. So she'll also, through some other platforms such as social media, our website, press releases, just to name a few, she will help and create an avenue for residents to understand, access, and navigate through the behavioral health system of care. So we're already starting to hear and see the benefits of that, and I think you will as well. So the second category, some of the good things that we're doing in there and some of the initiatives within the mental health and crisis supports. So I'm sure you are, you know, obviously aware or in agreement that, given the situation, the environment that we live in, that the need for mental health and crisis supports are needed more now than ever. It's common knowledge that COVID has increased the need for mental health services for many, and nationally, it's being reported that we are only seeing a fraction of what will be long-lasting negative effects of this pandemic. So we, as a board, are preparing with our, with services and such for that. So federal and state funding for mental health needs has not kept up with the increases that we've seen reciprocally with drug and alcohol, specifically opium. I mean, for the most part, mental health funding has been flat. So that shows you how critical and how important these levy dollars are. It allows the Adam Board to help fill some of those gaps and some of this growth in needs that we're starting to see. So the Adam Board's worked very closely with the Alternative Pass to expand the county's 24/7 crisis line. It is now the 24/7 Crisis and Behavioral Health Line, whose volume increased during COVID. In December, there were 300 engagements through this Crisis and Behavioral Health Line, including 12 active rescues, which is our individuals who have suicidal idea, you know, are thinking about suicide at that point. Thirty-five individuals were presenting with the suicide ideation, six referrals, and there were six referrals to the Crisis Intervention Treatment Team. So what that means is they reached out to law enforcement for their assistance in managing the mental health concern. So also, to further showcase how needs for crisis and mental health have risen, in 2019, there were 3,147 total crisis engagements compared to 4,254 in 2020. in two thousand nineteen, there were three thousand one hundred and forty-seven total crisis engagements compared to four thousand two hundred and fifty-four in two thousand twenty. So that's a thirty-five percent increase there. The Adam Board used levy funding to leverage federal funding to add peer supporters to this crisis team. So this month, through a partnership with Alternative Paths and Hope Recovery Community, there will be a peer supporter who's available twenty-four hours, seven days a week. That will be referred and works with the crisis team. So that's that additional component for those individuals who are calling and in need of that service. So finally, in this category, through a partnership between the Adam Board and Kent State University, every school district in Medina County implemented the Mental Health First Aid Program. And this is a program that teaches students and adults how to recognize signs of suicidal contemplation. So we're reaching a wide ride, a wide area and collaborating with many individuals. So in the last category of recovery supports, we have, the Adam Board's been able to use the levy funding to build, support and expand a pretty comprehensive and effective recovery support system. So for example, the Adam Board, as you may be aware, purchased and renovated a house on Highland Drive, which is currently the home for Hope Recovery Community, which is a certified recovery organization. We also provided, the Adam Board provided funding to Ohio Guidestone to partner with Hope Recovery Community and develop a certified peer recovery support network. So to date, there are seven certified peer, peer coaches, you can also call them, and they are serving two hundred and thirty-four individuals. There are two that are being trained right now. They've been certified and they're going to be going active and there are more being sought. So that's a pretty impressive program that's going there. Even during COVID, between October and January, Hope Recovery Community had over twelve thousand recovery touches. So those touches could have occurred through Zoom sessions, visits to the center, peer support situations, programming and groups. So they are pretty active. In November and December alone, forty-seven individuals were linked to detox, residential treatment and/or recovery housing through Hope Recovery Community. So we have a partnership with them as well for that. With the help of levy funding, the Adam Board was able to assist Kathy's house to expand. So currently, they added two male beds and one female bed. So they are able to house eleven male and seven females right now at Kathy's house and they are full with a waitlist. In addition, I mean, it's important to note that through this time period, Kathy's house also became certified through the Ohio Recovery Housing Network. So what that means is is they are going to be using and they are using evidence-based best practice programs and such and which are proven then to produce better outcomes. And then finally, in the recovery supports category, the Adam Board successfully leveraged levy dollars through, used the levy dollars. We got a state grant and we created or constructed a twelve-bed women's discovery recovery house is what it is now. The construction is completed. We've contracted with Ohio Guidestone to operate it and it will be a level three, which means that it will have the ability to have treatment inside the house if it's warranted or needed or if you have residents who require that level of of treatment. We are hopeful to open the house and accept residents early April. So it's right around the corner. So in closing, I've only touched on a few of the initiatives that and the good works that the Adam Board and its partners are doing as a result of the levy dollars. But we have some big ones coming up that I want to make you aware of and will report as we go. So as I mentioned, the Discovery Recovery House is opening in early April. Kathy's house is partnered with the Adam Board, Heartland Community Church, as well as several other community agencies such as Medina Metro Housing, Catholic Charities, Habitat for Humanity and Operation Homes, just to name a few, to add another house, another male house or a house for male beds. And at this point, we're looking at expanding and purchasing a house Kathy's houses through all these different collaborations. So that's good news. Male beds will increase the ability or that there'll be more male beds here. All Alternative Paths and Hope Recovery Community are partnering right now to add peer supporters in the jail. So this is pretty big in terms of it will help inmates as they transition back into the community. They'll already be linked into with somebody from the recovery to be able to take and navigate through that system as well. So that's a pretty good partnership there. There's also, we're going to have a focus on targeted, specific, specifically targeted populations of peer supports. So for example, youth, targeted straight for youth peer supports. Families, families that are involved, we're developing a, with partnership with Hope Recovery Community, a support program for the families as well as TAEs, which are transitional age youth. Those are youth that are defined as age sixteen to twenty-five and they are the ones that are often lost in the system. They age out of of the juvenile system and they're not quite in the adult system, excuse me. So we are definitely looking at that, so that's some neat things. And then finally, I'm sure this, prior to COVID, the Adam Board purchased the old paint store on Northland Drive. So it's adjacent to our other properties that are there. It's right next door to the Discovery Recovery House. And it's currently the house where the county is storing some of the, the office furniture that was donated. So we're glad we can help and maximize the use of that, of that building. But the goal of the board is to create a youth and family trauma-centered outpatient office and that would be operated through Alternative Paths. So early on, we were able to contract with the architects, provide us with options for renovation as well as new construction. They completed phase one activities and we have an initial site plan. Then COVID hit. So because of COVID, the state put its capital budget on hold, justifiably. So we also had to put the project on hold as well. So the good news is, is OMAS has revealed that it has a capital budget and it has requested the resubmission of our capital grant. So by the end of the week, we should have ours, our capital grant resubmitted and we are hopeful for an award so that we may continue the project. So really, that's just a quick snapshot of of some of the, you know, initiatives that we were able to, you know, create due to levy funding. I thank you for your time and, you know, welcome any questions if you have any.
I've got a couple.
Sure.
Are you still doing the crisis intervention training for law enforcement?
That was on my long version, thank you. I had to really cut. Actually, we, we were working with Alternative Paths and they successfully received additional dollars. So there's now an advisory group, plus there's another level of group for administrators as well. I believe the next training is March twenty, the week of March twenty-second.
Okay.
So yes, that is continuing. It's been very successful.
Do you have any, any feel for how many law enforcement officers across the whole county have gone through that program?
A lot, I can get you that number. That's going to be a better from Gail or from Alternative Paths.
My next question is around the mental health component. You you mentioned that the the number of cases or calls that have come in is up like thirty-five percent year over year. Do they keep track of the, the causation or the precipitating factors that give rise to the the mental health crisis? So in other words, I guess what I'm looking for is there a common denominator that is causing people to have a mental health concern? Something in a county that maybe we could, we could look at, whatever that cause is and try to intervene and do something about it.
Well, yeah, it's a pretty complicated question to answer in terms of there's many different factors. I think that especially in this environment, you see a lot of the episodes at home. You're all at home, you can't get out, something triggers, they make the phone call. But in terms also, you know, they get increased calls because of the suicidal ideations. You're looking at the economy, you're looking at your job. Once again, you're looking at the environment and such. So there's just a lot of different triggers. I think I can find out, I don't know how in-depth they are able to keep track of what triggered it or where where it occurred. But I may be wrong. I mean nowadays with all the statistics that they do and also with the federal government, whenever you use federal funds, they want you to do this GIPRA and they really want to nail down some of those things. But I will definitely take a look at that and see what what we can find out.
Okay.
Are the additional beds at Kathy's house enough or is there still waiting lists and?
Well, right now, there's a current waiting list. Once the Women's Recovery House is open, that will alleviate alleviate some of that waitlist. So the, with the Discovery Recovery House, so the neat thing about how the recovery is building, this continuum, is you have Kathy's house, which is a level two. And then you have our, the Discovery Recovery House would be a level three. So when you have somebody who's going in on intake, they can do, based on these best practice assessments and determine which is a more suitable place. So not only are we going to put the, the individual who needs the, in the right place, it will free up some of the other beds that people who can't get in at this point. So with this expansion project, the expansion project is targeted for what's called a level one. So male beds, males, residents in Kathy's house who need that level, which have a lot of different transition and different other skill building, once they successfully feel comfortable, what what's happening is is they're moving out of Kathy's house, but there's, they're not yet ready for housing. There's nothing necessarily available for that, other transitional type housing. So with this level two or this level one housing, it will allow those, the males from Kathy's house, when appropriate, to transition into that house and then into their, into the community that way. Right now, the targeted projection for the level one is six beds. But if if all goes well on the lot, there's the ability to actually build a duplex and add on to the house. So potentially over time, there could be some more growth in that particular area.
Phil, one last question. Have you heard anything about the twenty-five million dollars settlement?
The opiate, I have not heard anything at that point. I mean, I would reserve my, seems kind of low, but I haven't investigated.
Well, this is only one out of plethora of defendants, but.
My assumption was it's going to go through, we're going to hear, I'm going to hear it from you or the prosecutor. But I haven't heard anything other than the announcement was made.
Yeah, well, I guess I understand that they struck the settlement. And and now I guess it's a matter of getting the proceeds of the settlement. And then it goes to the the state one Ohio Board, I think it's called, to be distributed.
Right.
So it'll be, it'll be interesting to see how that board works and and how that money is allocated.
Correct, yes. What the formula is going to be.
This is the first, my understanding, it's the first settlement that Ohio has received. Other than Cuyahoga County and Cleveland.
Some it got some too, I believe.
Yeah.
Yeah, in their, right, right. So.
Very good.
All right, thanks, Phil.
Thanks. Thank you for your time.
Okay, we will move into a discussion session. Steve, I think you had something?
Oh, yeah, okay.
Ron, to put copies in our packet.
Yeah, thank you, thank you. Yeah, I've been working with Bethany and Kathy regarding legislation involving the broad, residential broadband expansion. There's two bills, actually Senate Bill Eight, which is going a little bit faster than the House Bill Two. It's in the Senate Committee. It's actually going today's its third hearing, which is in a possible amendment. So there's some amendments possibility. So this may be one of those that's fast-tracked to next week, actually, with our very close. So this is one, I guess, we've put together a letter largely reflecting the concerns already voiced to the committee from the Medina Port Authority, Ohio Economic Development Association, the CCao, regarding the, if you will, the exclusion of broadband providers that are nonprofit. In other words, right now, it's only, it only goes for, well, cable companies that are eligible for this grants expansion.
Which makes no sense.
Well, it makes plenty sense to the cable companies.
Yeah.
But it doesn't make sense to us, certainly. So there's that, there's that and we'll continue beating on that drum. But the other one involves some other issues involving expansion of local power. The board to assess property owners to help finance these broadband expansion projects. And the way it's written is it will give the authority to townships, counties and also municipalities. My letter, I focused on the primarily the township and county expansion of authority to create these assessments. And very specifically, it allows them to level these special assessments to provide the gap funding that if, let's say, a cable company wants to expand in a rural area in a township and the county or the township want to provide to qualify for the grant, let's say ten or twenty or thirty percent or even fifty percent of that funding, they could then assess all those property owners along that expansion and put it on their property tax bills. Right, the way it's written now, they get a two weeks notice before the action can be taken, the property owners, by mail. No, and I think, obviously, I think that's insufficient notice to a property owner that they're going to be assessed. Secondly, there's a number of questions that are, that are, that we raise that are not provided for because it's, the judgment is, it's called a benefit. What is, and we've had to deal this in public utilities, when you talk about water, sewer, road improvements, all those kind of things. There's at least a monetary benefit you can see. A broadband expansion, I guess it could argue, says so. What is the benefit of having a cable run down down a street to a property owner that largely if it's a non-residential use, like, like a farm?
Farm field.
Yeah, farm field, has no benefit from it, but they're going to have to pay. Is it based on footage? Is it going to be based on use, potential use? And of course, there's others, even when these expansion projects, some in those areas do have access. It may be expensive through hotspots. So are they going to be assessed or are they not going to be assessed? They have other alternatives. So a lot of those questions are not provided for in the legislation. So I thought, what this done is basically, since it's in, the argument is it's an ill-defined benefit of the property owner. And arguably, when, you know, you go before the board of revision or you start, when you have a value or assessment, you know, it's increased your value if you have water or sewer, your property, you can see it in the market. Having, you know, having cable go across your front, front yard, I'm not sure that the auditor takes that into account when they value your property for tax purposes, but here we're going to go and put a property tax on. And the other, what I didn't mention in the letter, actually, the local government can bond against that. It's a revenue bond, actually, that they are now able to have the authority to issue these bonds on that that portion of the project. So this is all obviously to give the cable companies access to the property taxes.
So, so the the local authority is going to issue a bond and then give the proceeds of that bond to a cable company so they can make money.
To fund the project.
The people that are going to be paying not only the cable company's fees every month, but an additional tax.
Yeah, exactly, exactly.
That sounds really fair, now does it?
Well, I tell you, like I said, this is, this is like a redo of the bill from last, House Bill Thirteen, that was last GA, that made it through the House. Actually, I voted against that when it was coming through Finance. But this is one that those provisions that is fast-tracked, this is, they're calling it the rocket docket. So this is both, this has moved fast. There's a companion bill, House Bill Two, and its first hearing is actually today in Finance. Its second hearing will be actually two days from now. So I imagine its third hearing will be next week. And fortunately for us in Senate Bill Eight, Mark Romanchuk, our state senator, sits on that. And then in Finance, Representative Kik sits on Finance. So I would recommend that we'd like to, I'd like to put the letters together with your agreement. Bethany and Kathy, I think, have already reviewed it and indicated support for it and the arguments. And likewise, we could get this out quickly to not only the Senate, our good Senator Romanchuk, as well as the Chair and the committee members of the, in the Senate, but also for House Bill Two, redraft it to fit that. They both are written exactly the same. They're both addressing, specifically have those amendments to Section three oh three point two five one and Section five oh five point eight eight one, which are areas that I identified. I was careful not to identify the expansion of the municipal authority in this area. And I'll just share with you, because I'm very cautious with the home rule argument that municipalities often provide. And because it's embedded in their section of code that already gives them authority to do these various assessments for roadway and so forth. Lot of communities have developed assessment equalization boards as due process for those. There's no provision for that and this for how, for for townships and counties. If you object and kind of commissioners or the township, go ahead and ignore that objection. If you're successful, those two-week periods, they get your objection. The only recourse is go to common police court. And that may be insufficient, right, for actually for an assessment issue. Municipalities have found a way for year, in years because of their tendency to develop, to do public, public improvements, have developed a means of, well, I'll just say administratively doing due process, seeing if it's a fair. Seeing if it's a fair assessment or so forth through local boards and commissions and things like that. Home rule is is actually. So I I did want to cloud our our argument, if that's all right with you, with arguing that the municipalities. Uh should be precluded from that authority. I I guess leave that somebody else argued that. But I think in terms of counties and townships, where we we would have dual juris- we'd have jurisdiction there as as a county. As well as within within those townships, it makes sense for us to, I guess, stay in our lane. In terms of arguing against that expansion of local government authority, if that's all right, I mean.
Uh I'm 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 good with that. But but the other thing I would point out about this is that it it seems to me that. Number one, we need better broadband access in rural areas and economically disadvantaged areas in our county. And this might be one way of of the state trying to solve for that problem, but it seems to me that it just creates other problems. For those exact same areas, uh because they're not gonna be able to afford the tax, not gonna be able to afford. Um, you know, I I just don't think this is the right approach to it.
Well, I I'd agree, it's somewhat of a problem. That's why I guess the letter recommends that they uh uh. Remove it from the bill and look at that further down. Uh if they're going, the the, I know there's only twenty million dollars uh in this bill. But this is the 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 the, I guess, the indication seems to be that the hundred and twenty five or over the next by end of two hundred and fifty million. That the governor wants to put in broadband expansion are are is basically going to use this mechanism to distribute that money. So you've if you've set that precedent for twenty million, they're and and the budget adds another two fifty or over the next two years. Uh think of that, the consequences. It literally would mean that the your our local cable company would be able to access the property tax assessments. Um going through either commissioners or the township trustees. Um and I, like I said, there's a due process issue as well as uh uh I'll I'll just say uh equalization, a benefit. How do you determine the benefit? Um person does develop and, you know, Ohio has one. You know, farmer is not gonna have limited benefit. And a lot of rural areas have a lot of acreage. And we've had to deal that one, deal with that issue when we extend utilities. And but here's one where the cable company can essentially say, well, we need the. We need the the million dollars to to expand over in this whole area for residential and twenty percent of it's gonna come from the residents. And the question comes down to is who determines benefit? Kind of loose. So I just, uh at this point, yeah, thank you. I if that's approved, I'll I'll work with Rhonda and we can try to get it out here. Uh quickly today so we can get it out to to the committees. And obviously, our 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 respect of uh, well, Sharon Ray as well as Daryl Kick and Mark Romanchuk, so. Alright, that's all I've got.
Thanks, Steve.
Thank you.
Yes, I have a couple of things. Um the first thing is the county currently. Um has set the inventory uh at five thousand dollars. Uh for, and this is for this uh Single Audit Act, to be actually recorded and and reported in the in the uh. Inventory or the fixed assets. Uh but we also have a hundred dollars set, uh which we need to tag. So every year, the departments they go through, um or anytime they purchase anything over a hundred dollars, they tag it. Does an inventory list, it comes to commissioner's office and it goes up to the um auditor's office, um is recorded up there. And I'd like to increase that to five hundred dollars. Um you know, the hundred dollars was set years ago and, you know, currently we're tagging, you know. Things that are currently disposable, monitors, those types of things. Five hundred dollars will at least get us up to the point where. Um you know, it's the computers, laptops, um those types of of inventory items. So if it's okay with you, I'd like to go ahead and and increase that.
I, you know, you know, we had things at the recorder's office that we had to tag that we'd burn through every year and then you had to go through that whole process. To eat, just throw them out, you know, um you know, they'd go through a shredder every year, you know, hundred. So I think five hundred dollars makes a lot more sense.
Should be higher.
You know, I I I spoke to Otter Kovak and um he's very happy with the five hundred. And um, you know, we're we're thinking there is some control. Um I mean, if you have a computer, a computer is about a hundred bucks. And so you go to a thousand dollars, let's say. Um you know, then the you don't have the accountability on the on a computer. So I'd like to start with five hundred. And see where we're at uh in a couple of years and then, you know, if we're finding that we're still tagging. A lot of equipment that is um, but we deem unnecessary, then we can increase maybe like seven fifty. And and we can, we can bump it up.
Is it something we need to do by resolution then, next week, or is it something we can just say, yes, we're okay with it?
Um I I prefer to do it by resolution, just so it's on the record. So and the second thing I have is, um as you know, you know, we're becoming more and more uh technology dependent. Um you know, especially with the COVID, you know, we've gone to Zoom meetings. Um and, you know, audio visual with, you know, connecting to large screen TVs for presentations. Um those types of things. Uh and because of the way that the revised code is written. Uh counties cannot have the centralized IT department. So but we can have a an IT department for those eleven departments under the commissioners. So I know Amy and I, we've been talking to several companies. We talked to a company about two months ago. Um about coming in, kind of doing an assessment of those departments under the commissioners. Um and they provided a a fairly good plan, but it wasn't, it was very expensive. Um it was in excess of of six figures. And they didn't really have a second step for us, um as to what they could do for us. We met with Involta yesterday and they gave us a proposal, um which would include a staff assessment. They would assess the infrastructure and the network. They would assess the current um programs. They would do a security assessment and then they would also assess the policies and procedures uh that we have. And it came in at about fifty four thousand dollars. Now, I am in discussions with Mike Lyons. Um on some things and I also have some, I have a call in to Involta.
At fifty four, does it have to go out for bid since it's over fifty thousand?
Well, that's what I'm talking to Mike Lyons about and I'm also talking to Involta about that too, um to see if we can get the a lower price. Um so what this would do is it would give us the ability to really look and see what we have. Under the commissioners and how we can might be able to integrate that better. Um I know we do have in the budget for a chief information officer at some point. Um we also have in the budget for an additional. Um IT employee. Uh currently, we have three and we don't have anybody to prioritize projects. To direct, to, you know, review, um systems, review the work that is being performed. And we really need somebody in to do that. This is the start. So if it's okay with you, um I'd like to go ahead and continue my discussions with Mike Lyons and with Involta. And then move forward and possibly present um this next week or the week after and get Involta in to do this assessment. Um I have a call into Lowell and I hope to meet with Lowell sometime, either today or tomorrow. To kind of go over this, let him know exactly what steps we're taking, what we're doing, um so that he's aware and so that the data board would be aware of it also.
We have a data board meeting Thursday, by the way.
Yes.
Yes.
I'm fine with it as long as the 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 quote here does not meet the threshold where we should have gone for bid. Yeah.
Well, I I have a couple of questions.
Yes.
Scott, um on on a couple of the deliverables that they identified. Um on the first one, the uh staff assessment. I guess I look at what they uh what they've listed here. I I I'm not sure that we need to have an assessment of the staff that we have. Uh and I'm just giving you my opinion. Uh as much as we need to understand process, which is part of what they've got in that that category. Um and and I would be more interested in 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 what's what skill sets. They think the county needs going forward, um as opposed to the skill sets that we have today. You know, and then one of the uh one of the things that um I guess in the next section, which is their ITIL assessment. Uh that that I think is where we need to to focus more. And because they're they're they're, for example, is is they're gonna look at help desk tickets. I don't think we have a help desk. So their assessment of that seems odd to me. The other area, um so anyhow, I would I would maybe go back to them asking to to refine that a bit.
Well, a actually, a couple of things. First, on the on the staff assessment, um we have three employees and they all have different skill sets. The question is, is are they being used to the to to their skill set? Um and we have some people doing programming, we have some people doing hardware. Um and and quite frankly, I thi- I think they're doing a great job, but I think they can be better utilized. And once we know where those three staff currently stand, we'll know what we're missing. And then we can look for that individual, that fourth person that we've we've uh budgeted for. We can look to find that individual that meets those skill sets, to to fill in, to fill in the gaps. Okay?
Well, part of that staff assessment too will evaluate what their skills currently as to who do they, if you will, go to. Uh to to provide insight to for them to do their job. In other words, see if they, uh right now, there's gaps. And they, I'm sure, reach out to other people they know to fill those gaps. So I think that'll be part of the report as well, correct?
Right.
Yeah.
Yes, very much so.
So if we're gonna do a chief information officer or trying to go that route, we really do first need to know what gaps to fill, is your argument, correct?
Exactly.
I agree.
And and we actually do have a help desk in place. We have a ticketing system in place, but the problem is, is these tickets come in, but there's nobody to prioritize. So we've got, you know, I I've got one individual who's working in the PCS system. Um who's extremely busy. He he manages and he works with a lot of different county departments and I've got one individual who is working with a sanitary system. And I've got one individual that works a lot with the GIS system and sanitary. So they all have their little comfort zones. And this this, by by looking at their current help desk and and the way our current ticketing system. Will be able to improve upon that and will be able to prioritize, alright, you're over here working on this project. But we got this project over here. You need to move to this, complete this. Once this is complete, then we can come back to this. So that's kind of where we're at with with that um.
Okay, alright, so fair enough. Uh so on the the other area that I I circled here is the cybersecurity assessment.
Yes.
So Corsa does a security assessment.
They do.
Every year or every other year, i- is is that something that we could leverage instead of spending seven thousand dollars in this proposal?
Possibly. Um you know, when they're when they're talking about this, they're gonna be looking at, I I think when when um. Corsa does that assessment, they're doing an external assessment, so they're looking at our different websites. They're looking at weaknesses in the system there. Uh this will be both internal and external. So and that's where we need the data board. We need to be able to to have the data board to give Involta. Um access to at least those systems under the commissioners. Um you know, we've got Cronos, we've got the PCS A system, uh we've got a billing system at sanitary, which is completely separate from. From, you know, the ours, the accounting systems. So we have systems that that have never really been checked out from an internal standpoint. Um which this would, which would be that. And in talking to Involta, um you know, cause I asked the same question. I said, look, I said. Cause I think, you know, they've got thirty two hours set for assessment of staff. I said, we really only have three individuals that you'll be able to assess. I said. If you, you know, and I can't imagine you're gonna use thirty two hours to assess three staff. And they said, no. They said they were expecting, what do they say, five or six? So, yeah, so we would, um that would that would be reduced and they're only charged us the actual hours. So once we get into the actual project, if there are things that they can leverage on or things that maybe they can't do because of restrictions set by the data board. Then those things will drop off. So this is more, this isn't necessarily a fixed price. This is a a really a do not exceed price. So if they don't do the work, we won't be charged for it.
Could we potentially set off the cyber cybersecurity to a separate uh and deal with the issue later? Or as to whether Corsa or or Involta could do it?
Um we can, but this would be a lot more in-depth than I think what Corsa does.
Alright.
Um because again, with Corsa, my understanding, um and as it's been explained to me in layman's terms, is they really try to. They they look at um from an external standpoint, any weaknesses in the systems. Um and I don't know that they go real in depth in that. I mean, I know that the the comments that we've had or gotten back. Um have been, um you know, I IP addresses on websites.
Right, right.
And you know, outdated security sys- systems, uh programs.
But they have commented on whether servers have been updated, whether they've gotten security patches and those are current. So I don't, I I guess maybe, maybe if nothing else, they could review that report and then figure out what their game plan needs to be and might save a few dollars.
Right, yeah, absolutely. I I don't disagree and and that we can leverage off the report that we received last year.
Yeah, so primarily the the staffing for this, they're they're based out of Iowa, I see, but I know they've got data centers in Akron and Independence. And I can't forget what are else in Ohio.
Yeah, we're actually working with um an individual, Michelle Moran. She actually lives in Medina County. And she works out of the data center in um Akron.
In Akron, okay.
And individuals we spoke to yesterday, I think two were in Minnesota, one was in Florida, one was in Chicago. So they have a team across the the nation and they do have local staff. Um that would be, you know, working on our project.
Again, I'm I'm okay as long as prosecutor's okay with the bidding threshold.
Yeah, well, you're gonna further work on on those elements, so, yeah.
Yeah, so what I'll do is I'll go out, I'll work, I'll I'll get the information. Um by the end of the week, I'll give you a memo. And then um I'll just have a resolution next week if it's appropriate. If not, I'll update you and get a resolution on the following week.
Okay, I'm good with it.
Sure, I am.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Amy, do you have something?
I do.
I think you wanna talk about buttons?
I do, thank you. So yes, thank you, everybody, for wearing uh your buttons today. Uh Saturday afternoon. Actually, Saturday morning, Shannon Ryan, our director of transit, had a staff meeting. So he and Amanda and Tom went over. Last year's high points forecasting for this upcoming year. They talked about a lot of really great stuff and one of the. One of the things they talked about is it's actually Ohio Loves Transit Week. Uh February seventh through the fourteenth, it's being promoted by the Ohio Public Transit Association. So it's a statewide initiative. Celebrating public transportation in Ohio and just promoting the need for um ridership and demonstrating the benefit to our community. And they had a bunch of different statistics. They're gonna continue to share information throughout the course of the week on their Facebook page. Uh but Ohio's transit systems provide ridership of over a hundred and three million trips per year. I mean, that just seems like an incredible number. And the Ohio Public Transit Association, they're the primary advocacy group for public transportation. And they work with Ohio's sixty three transit agencies and associated businesses across the state. They've got some really great goals. Um number one, they wanna ensure that the public transit receives federal, state, and local funding. To meet our needs, not just now, but into the future. They are trying to drive economic growth and job creation by making Ohio a leader in research and development. They're really looking into alternative fuels. Green energy and um state-of-the-art transit technology, some of which Shannon and his team talked about with our new cradle points. And how there's gonna be a variety of different means by which riders can pay uh to to ride the transit. They're encouraging cooperation and coordination among transit agencies, government entities, and the private sector. And I think. Shannon spoke when he was here last about the eighteen express and that's just a demonstration of the great collaborating that's going on in the transit world. They're increasing awareness and support for transit, fostering continuous improvement in mobility services. That's one of the things that Shannon touched on on Saturday. They had a great exchange with their drivers. It was the entire staff, we were here in the auditorium. And they were giving examples where with inclement weather, if they stop to pick up somebody who's scheduled for a trip, if the ramp's not cleared of snow. Or, you know, their pathway down the drive, Lisa, one of their dispatchers, is gonna serve as a mobi- mobility coordinator. So the drivers are gonna give a call back in so that Lisa can make communication with the family so that the ability for the rider to get to the bus. To ride transit will be improved. So we're working on all those relationships. Um and they certainly wanna improve the quality of life in our state and provide the reliable, affordable, safe, and convenient public transportation services. So I just encourage you, thank you for wearing the pins, and encourage you to watch their Facebook page, which is MCP Transit. For fun facts, they're gonna post this whole week, um as we too celebrate Ohio Loves Transit Week. Thank you.
Great, thank you. And and I thought maybe we should all take a bus ride.
That would be really nice.
Well, we'll see if Shannon can't arrange that a day and.
You'll have to come.
We'll uh we'll we'll go for a ride around the county.
I like that.
So excellent. Jeremy, do you have anything?
I got nothing today.
Got nothing? Rhonda? Anybody else?
Well, I guess move to adjourn.
There being none. I have a motion to adjourn in a second. Roll call?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Thank you. Yes. Thank you. Have a great week. We'll see you next week.